The time is 7:32. I call the March 18th meeting of Yardly Borough Council to order. Please stand for the pledge to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please, Manager Johnson.
Ms. Thompson.
President.
Ms. Segal-Morris.
Mr. Stump.
President.
Ms. Scherer.
President.
Mr. Carlson.
President.
Mr. Finer.
President.
And Mr. Applebaum.
President.
Seven members present. We have a quorum. Now we'll move on to community announcements. This is the portion of the meeting where members of the council and the public can tell us about upcoming events or other things happening in our community. We do have a special guest tonight, Heidi Shiver, the president of Birdtown, Pennsylvania, which we're happy to be a new member of, and I'd welcome you forward to give a presentation for us. Welcome.
So is it okay if I stand to do the presentation?
Sure. So the only way that it'll go on to the recording is if you hold that microphone with you. You can definitely stand, but it's...
I'll just sit and turn so I can see the slides. Is that okay? Great. Well, thank you so much for having me here this evening. Again, I'm Heidi Shiver from Birdtown, Pennsylvania, and congratulations on being in our Birdtown. So I'm just going to walk you through some slides to share with you about the program. Okay, next slide. So our mission is Birdtown, Pennsylvania works in partnership with local municipalities like yourselves and like-minded organizations to promote community-based conservation actions to create a healthier, more sustainable environment for birds, wildlife, and people. Next. We've been actively engaged in the state for more than 14 years. When we have 77 programs now across 14 counties, we doubled in two years. So we're really growing rapidly, which is exciting. We're across the state in Harrisburg area and also Pittsburgh area. We're under the umbrella of the Pennsylvania Audubon Council, and we're partnering with various conservation groups, including WeConserve PA, Audubon Chapters, and the Bird City Network. Those bird towns and bird cities sprinkled all over the United States and are the second largest program in the country. So here are the 77 programs, and bird towns in the 14 counties. There you are, highlighted in Bucks County, your number 15 in Bucks County. Next slide. So the Pennsylvania Audubon Council represents or supports the 20 different Audubon chapters in the state. They provide resources and opportunities to discuss and collaborate about conservation issues. We are an LLC under their corporate umbrella. PA Audubon Council is a 501(c)(3), and we're working with them and the Audubon Chapter Network to establish bird towns across the state. Next. So right here in Bucks County, we have a beautiful chapter, Bucks County Audubon. Anyone aware of Bucks County Audubon? Yes? Okay, good. So they have seven miles of beautiful walking trails that are open every day. They're in Solbury Township. They have a beautiful visitor center as pictured here. They have lots of environmental education programming for people of all ages, bird walks every other weekend, summer camps, field trips, and classroom instructions. Next slide. So why do we focus on birds? Birds keep our ecosystems running smoothly. Birds eat anywhere from 4 to 500 million tons of insects. That's a ton of insects. Insects are teeny tiny, and that's a lot. So they help keep our gardens clear of insects, you know, trying to keep diseases down, as well as our crops. Birds like crows and vultures, they scavenge carcasses to reduce diseases such as rabies, distemper, and plague. I don't know if you've heard the story about vultures in India, but they were having an issue with a medication there, and the population just plummeted. And with that came lots of different diseases. Feral cats really expanded, rabies really took off, and the plague came back. The populations after 20 years have not rebounded. So even those vultures are not attractive. They're a really important keystone species. Birds also disperse seeds and provide pollination services, and birds like hawks and owls keep our mice and rat populations in check. And birds are just incredible. They're joyful, and they're just really interesting and beautiful. I like to share the little red knot. It's a teeny tiny, it's a small bird, about the size of a robin, and it actually travels over 20,000 miles a year for migration, going all the way to tip-top of the Arctic down to the south, to the bottom of South America. So just incredible what birds can accomplish. They're also really important to give a sign if our environment is healthy. They are very sensitive to toxins and pollutants and can serve as an early warning sign if something is wrong in our environment, and I think there probably is. Birds are everywhere. There's actually over 100 million bird watchers in the U.S. now, spending actually over $100 billion. And birds really need our help. Breeding bird surveys show populations are declining, ranging from 30 to 77 percent since 1970, and the numbers are still falling. There was just a report that came out, a report about birds for 2025, and unfortunately, populations continue to decline. So what you're doing here in your borough is going to be super important to supporting birds locally and also the migrating birds that are coming through. Next slide. So what are the threats to bird populations? Loss of habitat and fragmentation of habitats, a huge problem to development. All those lawns, 40 million acres of lawns in the U.S. with 2 million here in Pennsylvania, they provide no support for birds. There's no place to hide. There's no place to have support for nesting, breeding. There's little water. So we really need to get away from the lawn perspective. Cats. Cats are a big problem. 2.4 billion birds are killed a year by cats. Window collisions. One billion birds die per year. They're confused by glass and the light as well. Pesticides, especially neonicotinoids. A treated neonicotinoid seed will actually kill a bird the size of a blue jay by just eating one seed. So pesticides are a huge problem. Climate change, you know, that's creating migration out of sync with food sources, invasive species replace native plantings that are needed for food, shelter, and nesting, and plastics. Plastics, we have, you know, 4,900 million metric tons in our environment. It takes 400 years to degrade, and 91 percent is not recycled. And then microplastics are everywhere. They're in our food, they're water, and our air. Birdtown addresses these issues through engagement, education, encouragement, support, inspiration, and promoting awareness. Next. And these are different things that a borough or a municipality, a new bird town, can choose to do. It's really up to you what your community would like to do. But some things would be installing demonstration native plant gardens to demonstrate why they're so important, passing proclamations, resolutions, and ordinances to address things like invasives and native plants and pesticides, supporting our running citizen sites programs like the Great Backyard Bird Count or the Christmas Bird Count, and so on. Next slide. So these are bird towns in action, pretty much locally here. The one on the left, you know, this is a natal plant sale. You can do tabling events, interacting and playing games with kids to share about birds. Bird walks there is at Font Hill, and then tree giveaways that we did in Lower Glendale. Next slide. So what we provide for municipalities is a statewide structured program with congruous goals, concrete resources and achievable actions, a framework for community networking with other bird towns and conservation partners. They include avenues of communication, events, volunteer opportunities, citizen science programs, and more. We provide training and workshops for our bird towns for free, and by working together, we can obtain more opportunities for funding. Next. This is our beautiful website, which is a great landing page that provides resources both for our Birdtown leaders as well as your community members. It also has a special back page that I've already gone through with the committee about what they have access to, contact lists, workshop and meeting recordings, and so on. Next. We have lots of different touchpoints with our communities through two newsletters. We have the Birdtown Flyer. This is a bi-monthly newsletter for our Birdtown leaders, and Bird Beat, which is a community newsletter that provides inspirational and seasonal tips. And then finally, the Birdtown Forum. This is a private Facebook page and group that we have over 260 members now, and it's growing, and this is where they can share upcoming events and inspiring material. Next. This is our leader workshop for this year. We're a little low this year. We're going to probably be adding a couple more, but this week, actually, yeah, tomorrow, we're doing the invasive plant management with a Penn State master leader, and then September, native plant ordinances. We're going to be working with Lower Makefield and sharing about their program, what they've done, and how it's been positively impactful for their communities and beyond, and so on. Next. We also have Birdtown Clutches. So this is a chance to do regional networking and meeting in person. You know, we do so much of virtual meeting, but I think it's really important to come together and meet in person. So we come together, usually focusing on a theme, and then sit down, share with what we're working on, and then talk about what are regional initiatives that we can work on together. And so you're part of Bucks County Birdtown Clutch. Next. This is our Bucks Birdtown Clutch. We met, and this is earlier in the year, and these are a number of the Birdtown leaders locally. Maybe you'll recognize a couple. Next. So we're organized by five strategy areas: municipal actions, school district and youth-related actions, community and individual engagement, organizations, collaboration, and partnerships. We think it's super important to work with others. Then advocacy, and what I mean by here is like promoting awareness about the issues that face birds and what we can do to support them. Next. We are a four-tiered program. These are the different certification level requirements. So as a brand-new bird town, you come in at the green level, and then you have a year to move up to the bronze, silver, and gold using the goals and activities worksheet, which is the next slide. So be using this worksheet to kind of guide your actions here in your municipality as a new bird town. It's numbered and color-coded, so it tracks very nicely with the annual report that's required every year. There's two important threads: habitat enhancement and also addressing threats to birds. These run through all the different strategy areas, really encouraging your bird town and your committee, and as well as you, to focus on what's especially supportive for birds, to help them with their populations. Next slide. And this is the welcome packet that I went over to your committee with. These are all the wonderful things that you receive as a bird town. Next slide. And so congratulations, Yardly Borough, for number 76.
Yay!
So do you have any questions for me?
My first question is, can you share the slides with us? I specifically like the slide about the action items that we can take and that our residents can take, and I think that they would all appreciate having those bite-sized little things and big things that they can do to me.
Absolutely.
Are towns more bird-friendly? Any questions from the board first?
I have a quite, well, one is a statement. Some residents in our community have taken parts of their lawns and created pollinator gardens.
Wonderful.
And I'm right here, done a beautiful job, and you can see the difference.
Good.
Yeah. It's really a nice thing to do. And so I think we should, you know, as a borough, do it on borough properties, and also I'd love to find a way to encourage homeowners to do so. And what would be really nice is, I don't know if you have resources you could point to, like a simple guideline for how to do that?
I do. They're on our website, actually, and probably in our resources, and in our Google Share Drive.
Okay.
And if it's not there, you know, I can always look forward to. The leaders just need to reach out to me.
Yeah, that would be great, and we can put it in Borough Hall or something along with other things that we give out, so people can be inspired.
It is on our website, actually, under Resources. There's this really guide, a guide for small yards and new properties.
Perfect.
That would be really good. Gives you plans and so on, a plan, a list, and so on of what to use.
Thank you.
Yeah, sure. Thank you for the question and comments. I appreciate it. Anyone else?
Yes, ma'am. Sorry, go ahead.
I just wanted to let you know, just as a point of interest, and I don't know, maybe it's something you know about anyway, but I'm president of Friends of Lake Afton, and we have like sycamore trees that line Lake Afton, and they're aging out, the trees are starting to fall in.
I'm sorry.
And we're losing them, and they are big homes to the wood ducks and the mergansers.
Oh, goodness.
And our, oh, gosh.
Tree tree?
No, arborist. Our arborist, he actually is a hunter, and he's with Delta Waterfowl. And they do shoot birds, but they try to replenish. So he is actually putting like a wood duck box, a couple of them, along Lake Afton, and nesting tubes for mallards.
Wonderful.
Because we're losing homes for them.
Absolutely.
And I was very excited when he told me that. I mean, it's sad that they shoot them, but they are at least doing something...
And he's not going to be shooting them.
He's not shooting them. No.
I'm a little worried.
They don't put them...
I didn't think so.
They don't put them in places where they shoot.
No, of course, I understand that.
So they're putting them in someplace safe for them to start.
Yeah, nesting boxes are a great way to go, but I would really encourage you to continue to add to your tree canopy. And if you're losing trees, you really need to replenish as much as you can. You know, sycamores are such an important, important native tree, so...
They are.
You know, if you could add, you know, additional trees to your canopy, that's super important.
Now, when you talk about birds, are you talking about bats also? Because I know bats are very harmful.
I'm not, no. But bats are super important, too, and all the things that we're talking about for birds.
I wasn't sure.
No, birds, bats, insects, wildlife, all the things that we're talking about support all those across the board, including ourselves. Everything that we're doing creates healthier habitats for all of us. So whatever's good for the birds is good for us, too.
Right.
Okay, great.
I'd like to just thank you on behalf of both the council and also our fantastic econo, excuse me, wrong committee, Environmental Advisory Commission, some of which are here tonight.
Right. And it'd be great if y'all could come up, too, everyone that's been involved with the Birdtown Committee that could come up.
Yeah, let's give you a big hand. Julie, Patty, Elizabeth, Don and Jane, you know, thank you. What, I was approached with this idea...
We'll get a photo in a minute.
...by way of Patty, through Julie, and I have a way of kind of, you know, grabbing you and pulling you in and not letting you go. So now we've grown our environmental advisory board at least double, not voting members, but, you know, associate members.
Wonderful.
And I can't tell you how appreciative I am of what you've done, everybody at the EAC, and contacting Heidi and, you know, moving this initiative forward. I also would be remiss if I didn't thank Spearhead Project Earth for donating the money for the application, which I wanted to mention because Michelle talked about, someone talked about tree canopies. We just hired someone as our science, environmental science lead, whose specialty is forestry, and he's working on a project regarding, well, Tree Town and elevating us up a notch.
Wonderful.
And I hope that he will also work along, you know, in, you know, parallel with what you're doing with Birdtown, so that we really create these exciting environmental habitats for the animals, the birds, and every, and just make this town a great destination, which I will talk about later during my Community Economic Development Committee presentation.
No, great. No, I think that for sure, it's been, the committee's just been a wonderful, you know, group to work with, you know, just so enthusiastic, so passionate. So it's been a joy working with all of you, and I'm here for you and to support you in any way. So thank you for your comments.
Thank you so much, Heidi.
I know you wanted to do a picture, but before you do, does any member of the public have any questions for Heather?
Heidi.
Heidi, sorry.
It's okay.
All right.
Oh, okay.
I just want to share with you real quick, too, Birds of Bucks County just came out. It's the second edition. This is all the 369 birds that live or pass through Bucks County. In the back, it's 70 locations where you can bird here in Bucks County. So it's going to be available across at the bookstore. Just wanted to let you know.
Just one quick, one more question, which is just that we struggle with, we don't control the canal, but it doesn't have enough water. It's a continuous issue we're dealing with, that those of us who live in the community have to deal with. How does that affect the bird habitat?
You know, I really can't speak to that. I'm not sure exactly. I mean, obviously, more water is better, you know, depending on what kind of waterfowl is here that would be supporting that. I mean, that could definitely be a point to be made when you're talking about that. But I don't have anything specific, but I can certainly provide something for you, you know, working with Bucks County birders or Bucks County Audubon, and create something for you if you wish.
That's great. Thank you very much.
Of course. So if y'all could stand up and come forward, we could get your picture taken. That'd be great. Now, if you're supposed to, get up there as well.
Read and tell it.
So where would you guys like to gather? Maybe right here in front?
I think it's easier to stand behind.
I'm sure Heidi would want to be in it.
Yeah, I would like you.
Oh, thank you. Thank you so much.
In the middle, I'm figuring it.
In the middle, sir.
Do I get in? No, you got to go to that one.
Yeah, I'm taking a picture.
Come on, chief, I'll stand in the back.
This is my cool picture.
Beautiful, okay. One more.
Guys, that's it. You can leave.
Cheese, birds, trees.
We got one more.
Time flies.
We have to get to seats.
I think we have to vote on this, right?
Let me get out of the way.
Did you go to, oh, sorry. You okay?
Your left.
Oh, thank you, thank you.
Can you get anything at this point? Can you? I don't know. I don't know. You'd have to fight that one.
Madam President?
Yes.
Just one comment. I know you probably realize it, that these are the signs that we've been asked to install somewhere along the roadways here in Yardley. To the Birdtown Committee, or the EACs, have you done any, you know, scouting to see where the best places are to put these signs and come back with a recommendation for the borough?
Yes, please come forward. Thank you.
Hi, Julianne Passini, 132 South Main Street. I'm with the PA Birdtown Committee. I think we are thinking of putting them kind of at entry points into the borough. So I was actually, I was just coming back from getting gas the other night at Wawa, and I think there is a Yardley Borough, like municipal, sign down there, kind of by the commons. I think that'd be a great location there, coming in that way. And then probably, if we can, I would really like to have one over by the lake. So maybe perhaps, like, on that bend that is from, coming from, you know, Yardley...
Taylorsville Ridge.
Yeah, Taylorsville into, onto Afton. So I think in that area, potentially.
It's also heading south, like, from, you know, from the, or heading from the north end, coming south, you have like the Dolington...
Oh, sure. Yeah, further up, you're saying.
A lot of traffic comes in, you know, if you want.
Yeah, absolutely. And that's where the other sign is. It's where the other duck sculpture is. So potentially, that's another area, too. We can absolutely order more signs if we would like them as well, so.
Madam President, what is the process for that?
I was just going to say, this is a first, that we've talked about putting in non-street signs as a council. So I assume, like with the ducks, if we're putting something on borough property and it's going to be permanent or semi-permanent, we'll have to vote on it. And I will look in the meantime, while we're, so EAC, or the Birdtown Committee will make our recommendation where they think that visibility will be best. And then, in the meantime, I'll take a look if we have any official policies on the books. I know we don't have a sign ordinance currently, although it has been in draft for a while. So I will have to get back to you on that. Councilperson Applebaum.
Okay, well, thank you. I know that they're anxious to celebrate and show off the new designation.
Can I ask, if it's not borough property, what are the, as long as the person whose property it is, doesn't mind?
Like if it were to be put on a lake.
If it was on Lake Afton.
I know.
That's interesting.
It's okay.
I think so at Lake Afton. I don't know on the spot. I'll have to check. But I think as long as, in the historic district, obviously, you have to get a certificate of appropriateness for signs.
Okay.
Yeah. I'm going to look into all of this and officially respond at our next meeting. And if you could, EAC could officially send in their recommendations, that would be great.
Should I send it to everyone?
To your liaison.
Okay.
Yeah, we need to meet anyway, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
I'll just say real quick on that note, we, on the north side of Main Street, the north end of the borough, when you're coming into town on Main Street, on the white sign that says Borough of Yardley, we do have a sign already that looks like it's about that size for our Tree City USA Arbor Foundation. And that's the only sign of that that we have. So maybe that could be a potential place to... We're a Tree City. We're a Birdtown, and we'll just go all the way down to the ground with signs on the pole to show off all of our awards.
And I think those two things go together, trees and birds.
Exactly.
Good. Thank you. All right. Are there any other community announcements tonight outside of Birdtown? First, from council, any community announcements about upcoming events? Any community announcements from the public? Okay, we'll close community announcements and move on to public comment. This is the portion of the meeting where members of public can address council on matters not on the agenda. We ask that you keep, come forward, state your name and address, and keep your comments to three minutes per hour. Any public comments this evening? Yes, Ms. Salantano.
Jane Salantano, 136 North Main Street. I'm coming before the council tonight to request that the council consider and undertake the implementation of an ordinance that will ban the keeping of roosters on property. It would bring Yardley Borough up to the same standards held by its surrounding municipalities. I did some very quick research, and I think we're the only municipality that permits the keeping of roosters. My reason for bringing this forward is that as time has gone on and people are becoming, are beginning to keep poultry in their backyards, a lot of people, in addition to keeping hens for eggs, I assume, are also starting to bring in roosters. Roosters are very, very noisy, and I have the distinct advantage of living between two houses that are keeping roosters. And they start at about 2:45, 3 o'clock in the morning, and go through till about 10 o'clock in the morning, and then again, often intermittently during the day. And if the foxes are active at night, you can hear the roosters shrieking. They seem stressed, scared. So I had done some research, and I realized that Yardley Borough is the only town in this area that permits, that is silent, whose ordinances are silent on the keeping of roosters. If you're interested, I have the ordinances from other towns. Everybody's approached it in a different way. it in a different way. Last summer, Newtown Borough implemented a rooster ordinance that basically forbade the keeping of all poultry. And they are, the town, Borough's reasoning for Newtown was that not only was it disruptive to homeowners that didn't have the roosters, they also found a real uptick in rats and vermin, because the feed and the feces from the birds attract vermin and rats. And it was becoming a huge issue. And so they recently enacted a fairly lengthy ordinance mandating, saying that you could not keep roosters. I don't know if you're interested in seeing that. I did not make copies for everybody.
Manager Johnson, could you scan it in and email it to everyone? That would be great. We'll take it. Yeah, unless you need the copies. Yeah, one second. Are you done your public comment? Okay, sure. Go ahead, Councilperson Finer.
The question is, and I think it's important to distinguish between roosters and hens.
Correct.
Very big difference in disturbance. The, when we have a problem like that with a rooster making noise, is that something that we could enforce using, using our existing noise ordinance?
Yes, we did send a homeowner a notice, I guess about a week ago, maybe a little bit more, when Wes was here. And he's going to be following up with that homeowner, because they obviously did not do anything with the roosters. Sometimes he can put collars on them so that they can't crow, which others have done in the past. But we have not heard from this particular resident.
Thank you.
And currently, under our ordinances, the escalation policy is, I believe, speaking with Wes, that if they don't comply with, kind of like a cease and desist from the borough, it goes to district court, like we have with a few other nuisance issues in the past.
I guess my rationale for doing it this way is, there is that avenue to pursue. But I think it's always worthwhile to take a two-pronged approach. And while I don't think enacting an ordinance would require people to get rid of roosters they already owned, because they'd probably be grandfathered in, it would keep new people from keeping roosters in the borough. I mean, most townships around here require at least five acres of land before you can have a rooster. I don't know if there's anyone in the borough that owns, has a home on five acres of land, has a property that size.
I do know that I have friends who have chickens, and sometimes you get eggs and they hatch, and oh, you have a rooster. And then what do you do with it? So I think probably providing folks who, not by any choice of their own, have a rooster, after something hatches, resources of what, where they can give their fowl, probably would be helpful as well, even if we could build that into a cease and desist order, like here are some rescue organizations that you could pursue, or something like that. But, any other questions?
Yes, I have a question, Ms. Salantano. I understand why someone would want to keep hens, obviously with the price of eggs these days. But why would people want a rooster? It would seem, I don't know, a little bit odd, in my opinion. But do you know why?
No, I've never asked the homeowners why.
We have a, we have a, someone in the back that might be able to answer.
Yeah, they can answer.
The reason is that a rooster will protect his flock. The rooster will defend, if the hens run away, the rooster will run to protect the flock.
Hmm. Okay, well, thank you for answering that. I appreciate it.
Problem. You need a silent rooster. Silent but deadly.
But many people do keep thriving backyard flocks without roosters. And you can get eggs without roosters.
Oh, yeah. Well, that's my point. Yes. Yeah. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Question, Ms. Salantano. When you said that Newtown Borough recently created an ordinance, was that forbidding the keeping of hens as well?
Yes.
Did I understand that correctly? Okay.
No, no, hens were permitted. I really didn't read it that carefully.
Okay.
But my understanding is that hens are permitted.
Okay.
But have to be, you have to get a permit from the borough to keep hens.
Gotcha. Okay.
Roosters are absolutely forbidden.
Right, which is, a lot of municipalities ban the keeping of roosters. It sounds like we're, this is, almost maybe falls in the category of an oversight, in that it was maybe never an issue, or it was just, you know, dealt with as it came.
And every municipality has dealt with it in a different way. Some have done it as a zoning issue. Some have done it as a noise ordinance issue. Some have done it as an animal welfare issue. I mean, you'll see when you read the regs, every municipality around here did it under a different platform.
Yeah.
Legal platform, which I found very interesting. But the result was exactly the same.
Well, thank you for your hard work on this. I know you first brought this to my attention, I think, back in January.
Yes.
Really done your homework.
They were very active in the winter.
So, yeah, thank you for, for the.
I never knew that roosters crowed at, like, 2 o'clock in the morning. Yeah.
I'm going to ask general government to take a look at this, as our drafter of ordinances on council, unless another committee of council would like it.
You may have it.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment this evening? Hearing none, I will close public comment, and we will move on to consideration of the lengthy consent agenda dated March 18, 2025. It includes approval of the minutes dated March 4, 2025, an event permit for kids' music round, April, June, Thursday, or April and June, April through June, I think that should be, Thursdays in Buttonwood Park, event permit for Tai Chi, April through October, Wednesdays in Buttonwood Park.
Tai Chi.
Tai Chi. I thought it was, um.
Greek letter.
Greek.
Misspelled.
Certificate of appropriateness 25-0243 South Main Street sign, certificate of appropriateness 25-0316 South Main Street sign, consideration of FEMA-funded 112 through 114 Morgan Avenue elevation payment certificate number two, resolution 25-04 establishing refuse collection fees for 2015 through 2024, and consideration to authorize RV to begin engineering of Dolington sidewalk. Does any member of council wish to remove an item from the consent agenda?
Yes, Madam President.
Sure.
I'd like to remove the approval of minutes and the two permits, just for a brief question.
Sure. The.
Tai Chi and the kids' music.
Got it, the event permits.
Yes, thank you.
Any other requests for removal?
Or do we need to discuss H, or is it good? I'm not, I don't need to remove it. Let's discuss it when we have discussion.
Sure, yeah. So all those in favor of approving items D through, or, sorry, is there a motion to approve items?
D through.
D through H.
No moves.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion was made by Councilperson Finer. I'll give it to Councilperson Stump on the second. Discussion from council.
Just regarding, this is just clarity for the public. So number, item H, consideration to authorize RV to begin engineering the Dolington sidewalk. What this is, this is a response to the grant that we received for $278,000. This is spending $24,000 and change, which is the amount that the grant allows us to spend on engineering. And we're going to do surveying with that and begin the design phase for that final piece of the North Main Dolington sidewalk. And we will need to get another grant to finish the design work before we can go to construction. The construction is actually now paid for with that grant, which is pretty amazing, which includes, to your question earlier, flashing beacons for crossing North Main Street where the crosswalk will be by Dolington. So, and having this work done is going to show that we've actually done work on the project, which is always helpful for future grants, of which there's one pending right now. We'll see how that turns out. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Any other comments on D through H?
I just have a question on H. Have we put the reins on so that we're not going to be sitting here a year from now and have to have to redo engineering? In other words, doing it too early to make sure he doesn't go down a path and do something that then when we put Phase 3 sidewalk in, oh, we got to change the orientation or something. You just want to make sure it's tasks that are.
Yeah, I.
Not going to be a subject to a change later.
Good point. Ask them the survey is, is good to go. You know, once you have the survey, you have the survey. I mean, if it, if it ends up being 10 years from now, I don't know. But, because things change like that. But hopefully, we're talking about a year or two. And, yeah, he's not going to do anything that he has to redo. But it's really, the initial process of, is the survey is like half of it, and then the rest, it's like 11,000 and something for the survey. And then the rest of it is, you know, the early process to deal with what comes out of that survey. So, yeah. It's part of the whole, they gave us the whole proposal, which is what they used to get the grant. So this is a portion of that proposal. So I would expect them to continue the work within the proposal.
But this, this portion, the survey, or whatever, that, that portion is not in the other LSA grant request for engineering?
It would be, I don't have the LSA grant in front of me, but I do have the memo here. Oh, yeah, here it is. Yeah. The LSA grant, yeah, no, they add up together. So this portion is $24,885, and the LSA grant is $168,550, the total being $193,435. So this is all already sectioned off. So, yeah, we would hold them to that if they didn't stick to it. Thanks.
President, oh, H, I did make a mistake, but it's okay. H has, excuse me, G, my bad, has a little mistake on there. I believe we're not looking to establish refuse collection fees between 2015 and 2024. I believe that should be 2025.
No.
Is that correct?
No. No, it was typed correctly.
Oh, then I didn't understand.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, well.
Do you want to respond why the dates are that way, into, into the past years?
This is required by our collection company, the collection agency, Portnoy. Resolutions weren't done previously. The trash fees were decided during the budget process. So when the budget was adopted, so were the fees for trash. But they want it spelled out in resolutions, which is what you have before you now.
Okay.
So if you see in the actual resolution, it lists out, 2015 was 93 per quarter, 2016 was 70 per quarter, et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I seriously was wondering why that was the case. Okay.
So to tag on that a little bit, I know we had this discussion maybe six months ago, that there are a few accounts in the borough that are very, very delinquent. And so this will enable our collection agency to know what the rates are for people that are maybe behind by multiple years, because there is a different rate every year.
Correct.
But yes, David, it confused me when I first saw it as well, too. Just a fun question I had, Minister Johnson, you may or may not know the answer to this, but from 2015 to 2016, it actually went down from 370 to 80, 80 year to 280. Was that because we changed companies, or was there?
Went out to bid necessarily not changing companies.
Okay.
I don't recall who it was, but it was a bidding process.
So we're probably not going to count on getting that next time we rebid it, getting a $100 lower rate.
Depends on how much competition's out there.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much for that.
That's before the era of inflation.
Right.
Any other questions on D to H from council first? Any questions on D through H from the public? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes dated March 4, 2025?
Yes, I made a mistake. Second, then.
Motion was made by Councilperson Share, seconded by Councilperson Applebaum. Any discussion from council? Discussion from the public? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Item B, event permit for kids' music round from April to June, Thursdays in Buttonwood Park. Is there a motion? Is there a second? Motion is made by Councilperson Siegel Morris, seconded by Councilperson Share. Discussion from council.
I was able to dig a little bit deeper while we were discussing other things, and I found the answers I wanted. So we, if it's okay, we could go to a vote.
Sure. Any questions from the public on this one? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. One more, event permit for Tai Chi, April through October, Wednesdays in Buttonwood Park. Is there a motion to approve? No moves? Is there a second?
Second.
Motion was made by Councilperson Share, seconded by Councilperson Applebaum. Discussion from council. Discussion from the public. I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, everyone.
My apologies. I jumped the gun before I found the answer. I was looking.
There's no need to apologize. I think it's, you know, we should all be going through with a fine-tooth comb, things that we vote on. So totally fine.
Thank you.
All right. Consideration to accept the March 18, 2025 finance report. Are there any issues? Otherwise, it will be accepted by consensus. Next up, we have consideration to accept the resignation of Police Chief Joseph D. Kelly III, effective March 31, 2025. I would like to give Chief Kelly the floor to speak if he would like. Or you can not speak if you would like, because I realize that it may be difficult for you. I also have a few words that I'd like to share, as I'm sure others do as well.
If you would like to go first, I'll speak when, when you're through.
Sure. So we have a plaque forthcoming. It's not ready yet, given the timeline of everything is moving quickly. But on behalf of the Yardley Borough Council, I want to express our deep appreciation for Chief Kelly's years of dedicated service to our community, over 10. His leadership vision and steadfast commitment to public safety have strengthened both our police department and, I believe, the borough as a whole. Chief Kelly has always led with integrity and a focus on progress. Under his leadership, the department has expanded its presence, strengthened relationships with residents, and implemented innovative programs that have brought the community and law enforcement closer together. His ability to balance operational efficiency with meaningful engagement has been a model of modern policing. Several times, he has beat the budget that he was awarded, which is unheard of in the field. Name another police department that operates under budget, I will wait. So much so that other chiefs have approached him and have approached members of council, including myself, and asked, how do we do it? Through his guidance, the department has grown into a more structured, well-trained, and well-equipped force, prepared to meet the challenges of today's public safety landscape, with officers under his wing who feel as ingrained into the fabric of our community and our lives as our very residents do. He prioritized professional development, ensuring officers had the tools and training to serve effectively, and embraced partnerships, and that enhanced the department's capabilities without unnecessary financial burden on taxpayers. His work has also fostered an environment of trust, both within the department and throughout the borough. He has been not just a chief, but a mentor and a collaborator and an advocate for public service at its best. His leadership will be missed, but his contributions will have a lasting impact on Yardley Borough for years to come. Chief Kelly, we are grateful for your dedication, your service, and the countless ways you have made this community safer and stronger. I am especially grateful for all of the times you had a million things better to do, but you got down at eye level with my son, and you talked to him like you had all the time in the world, which has truly encapsulated you in his mind as his hero forever. We wish you all the best in your next chapter, and we know that your legacy here will not soon be forgotten. And my words to LMT are, where do I send my angry letter? Would anyone else like to share some words?
I'd just quickly share that, I mean, you covered a lot of ground there. But just on a personal level, I was there the day that, when we were hiring the chief 10 years ago. It makes you realize how long I've been at this. And when the chief showed up amongst the other candidates, I was like, that's the guy we want. And you have over-delivered the high promise of that initial meeting with you. And I, I think that through the last few years in the United States, we've had so much challenge with policing. And, and we didn't feel that here in Yardley Borough. We felt, all we felt is, and I think I speak for the vast majority of residents here, they know that you've always, you and the department that you built here, has always had everyone's back. And we've always known that. And we're extremely grateful for you, for your service.
If we talk long enough to filibuster, do we then not?
I'm voting, I'm voting no.
If we get to midnight?
Not accepting that.
Chief, I've told you these things before in passing at various times. But when I first moved to Yardley in 2017, because my then-girlfriend, now-wife was from Ewing, and I wanted to be close to her, but still be in Pennsylvania. and I wanted to be close to her but still be in Pennsylvania. One of the reasons why we decided we were going to buy a house in Yardley Borough, not Lower Makefield, not Wrightstown, when my realtor sent me a house in Wrightstown, even though she said it was screaming Jared and Allison, I said, no, it's not in Yardley Borough. And she said, well, don't you want to at least go look at it? And I said, no, it's not in Yardley Borough. I don't want to go see it. The reason for all of that was primarily, not all, there's many things that make Yardley great, but one of them is the community policing of the Yardley Borough Police Department. Since I first moved here, I was, I've been on a first-name basis with many officers. And I didn't realize that that was a thing, you know, where where I grew up, if you didn't know the police officers, that was a good thing, because it meant that you weren't in trouble. But your officers went out of their way to get to know me, to welcome me to town, to give me their cell phone numbers in case I needed anything. I mean, over and above what I would expect from a police department. And we are extremely grateful for all that you've invested in this department. And echo what Caroline said. That's how I feel right now. We don't want to see you, we really hate to see you leave, but at the same time, we're happy for you, that, you know, if this is a next step for you and step up for you. And yeah, we will definitely miss you, but we know you'll be right down the road.
We will not be sharing anything at this time. I'll keep it in the box for now. Tears are okay, too. Any other comments from council? Yes, Mayor Harding?
So I know Chief Kelly submitted a letter to myself and yourself and Borough Manager was copied on it, and I think it probably should be entered in the minutes, the letter. And it is, it is quite detailed. But if you could just entertain me to read the last three paragraphs?
Absolutely.
So Chief Kelly goes through a list of some of the things he's done, but I think, you know what, maybe somebody else should have better read it.
Sure.
As I get older, I get more emotional. All right, I'll try to get through it. All right, I'll do it. I can do it. I can do it. Just don't look at me, fine, okay? So he ends his letter with these last three paragraphs. Throughout all these team-built accomplishments, what I valued the most was the opportunity to work alongside and for dedicated men and women who share the same vision and mission of serving our community, a vision centered on integrity, loyalty, courage, and respect. As I transitioned to my last policing chapter, I am confident that the borough will continue to thrive, and I look forward to witnessing this success in the coming years. I would like to express my deepest gratitude to you, to both of you, our esteemed Borough Manager Paula Johnson, our past and present Borough Council members, the professional staffers, our officers, our auxiliary officers, our chaplains, and the community and business for your unwavering support during my time with the borough. You gave me, a man with a strange northern New Jersey accent, a chance. Since that day, we have worked together, laughed together, worried together, celebrated together, grieved together, and over time, we have been blessed to blur the lines between colleagues and family. It has been a privilege to serve as part of such an extraordinary team, and I will forever carry the memories of our collective efforts to ensure a safer Yardley. Please let me know how I can assist during and after the transition period. I'm happy to help ensure a smooth and seamless handover of my responsibilities. Gratefully, Joseph D. Kelly III. So if you would like to read the whole letter, I think it'll be in the minutes and definitely worth the time.
And that, folks, was not written by ChatGPT. I can tell you that. Any comments from the public? I know we don't have a motion yet. Can you tell I'm avoiding it? All right, so do I hear a motion to accept the resignation of Chief Kelly, effective March 31?
Regurgingly, so moved.
Is there a second?
Second?
Motion was made by councilperson Share, seconded by councilperson Applebaum. Any further discussion?
What happens if we vote against this? Does he have to stay?
I don't know. I don't know. I was supposed to have to look it up. Good question. Any any real questions?
I'm sorry.
Any questions from the public or comments? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations, Chief Kelly. We'll miss you.
So I think my letter said it all, and I took a long time preparing it, but I talked to the mayor about it on the show this morning, this afternoon, rather. And this was a different experience for me. I've been a police officer or in policing since I'm 18 years old. I grew up in New Jersey Transit. I entered there as a young man and got my feet under me, went through various levels of supervision, mid-management, and then was lucky enough to enter High Command and finish up as a deputy chief and acting chief for a number of years. When I came here, I had the skill set. I fell in love with this town before I was hired. I came here to look at it when I saw it in an advertisement. I brought my family down here, and since that time, I have not regretted a single day that I've served the people of this borough. I was blessed to have a great team bestowed on me. I was blessed to have great councils that believed in me. And I was blessed to have great friends and now family that I've come to know in this borough. So it's hard to put into words the gratitude I feel towards this community, but two things stand out the most, and that's what I put in my memo to you and the mayor and Paula. The day that I was shot, what defined this borough was not an act of random violence like that, but rather the response from everyone in this borough that followed that act of violence. I remember calling people I worked for, and they were extremely upset and worried, and the businesses putting out signs saying that we love and support you. That I will take and remember for the rest of my life. And last year, when I buried my mom, and there were multiple people from this council, multiple people from this town who reached out, and she was escorted to rest by the Yardley Borough police officers. And those are the memories I'll be forever grateful for. So thank you for the opportunity, and no, I'll just be up the street if you need anything.
I know that folks probably have a lot of questions about what's next for Yardley Borough and our police force. We don't have answers for you, and we're not rushing to provide answers to you. We will undertake a period of thinking, collecting information, and considering our options as we go forward. And the first part of that will be making sure that we interview Chief Kelly extensively before his last day. I know he has offered to be available after he starts his new job, but, you know, we don't want to take advantage of that. So we'll spend the next two weeks gathering information from him, and there will be a committee of council that is formed as a search and transition committee. And the public will have ample opportunity to provide input as we move forward. Any other comments on that from anyone on council? Okay. Now we'll move into our working session, which feels like an abrupt change, but we'll start with general government this evening.
We don't have much to go over this evening. We'll let other people do other pieces. But I just want to comment a couple of things. The short-term lodging ordinance, the planning commission completed the review of the second draft of that. We just got got it back this morning. We'll have that, there's minor things to change in there. A couple of things when we went from having residential into being only commercial, there's some wording that needs to be cleaned up, and I will coordinate with a solicitor to get that done, so that at our next meeting, April 1, hopefully we'll be prepared to vote on making that ordinance posted publicly. And then the other thing, budget-wise, luckily, the snow has stopped, we think. So it was a little rough in January and in the beginning of February, but now I think we're probably good for the rest, I hope. Real estate transfer tax has been a little light, about $1,000 a month light for the first three months, but we budgeted a little lower than last year anyway. But hopefully, that'll pick up as time goes on. That's all I had in general government for tonight. I was hoping we'd do the short-term rental thing, but we got to wait till a regular meeting. We'll do that April 1 or whenever our next meeting is.
Yep. Was it the 1st? April Fool's? Yeah, it is.
I think it is.
All right. Thank you.
Okay.
Any questions for Don on general government? Okay, community outreach, councilperson Stump.
Sorry, I was writing, I just have one question though for you, Don, real quick. So at that April 1 meeting, will we be voting on the ordinance or are we just bringing it back for a discussion? Or do we know?
We'll be voting to advertise.
Voting to advertise. We're not actually voting on the, okay.
Vote to advertise.
Anytime it's on the agenda, I get a lot of emails from people asking. That's why. Just wanted to clarify that. Okay, perfect. Thank you very much. Okay, so for community outreach, I have one item about adding an additional trashcan on Buttonwood Drive. This is something I've actually been working on for about a year and a half before I even joined council. I spent, yeah, it's quite funny, isn't it? So initially, when I started having conversations about adding a trashcan, I talked to a few people, and one of the questions that was raised was, do we really need a trashcan? And so I started monitoring the levels of trash throughout the week with photographic evidence, and we were able to confirm that we we have actually several trashcans. I believe we have, I think it's, I have the locations on my phone, but I think it's 16 or 18 public trashcans throughout the borough. And our trash hauler, Republic, empties those on Wednesdays and Saturday mornings. But there's one area where there's a lot of trash congestion, if you will. Two cans that routinely overfill on the weekends. Because of the way our current trash falls, it's emptied, as everyone knows, Wednesday morning and Saturday morning, so it's emptied for the weekend. But then oftentimes, two trashcans will fill up on Saturday and Sunday, and then in the heat of the summer, there's typically a lot of food trash in them that will overflow. And then we have three days before we can get those emptied. And so the two cans that normally overflow the most are the one down by the liquor store, kind of on that corner where you turn on Buttonwood Park Drive, and then by the tot lot. And at first, one of the things, going through this process, we initially had the thought, well, maybe that's from events. And what we found through this process was actually, there's just so many more people walking in the borough now. And out in the borough, we have a more, we have more shops. We have a coffee shop, a second coffee shop that we didn't have seven years ago. So I think that through this whole process, I actually found that in the annex, we have two of the shelves that support the trashcans that are as spares. And so I kind of had the thought that, hmm, what if we put one of these out? And so, because we were already in the middle of, this was last summer, because we were, the budget was already locked in, and I didn't want to put this in the budget for 2025, I thought to myself, how can we raise the money to just pay for this at no cost of the taxpayers? And so Parks and Rec has voted to give us not to exceed $500, which I've I've talked to Ken Smith, our public works contractor, about that, and he said it shouldn't cost more than $500 to install it. Realistically, it may only cost a couple hundred dollars, and then it's about 30 bucks for the plastic can. Parks and Rec grilled me on this and the location of it for about 45 minutes. So I will just say that. We went back and forth multiple times about the location. So let me, of course, I'm happy to answer any questions, but let me just say I've already been thoroughly grilled. The location is there in red. As you can see on my photo, it's it's kind of a little, can we scroll down a little bit there?
Sure, thanks.
Whoops.
I don't know how to use a computer.
It's the last page.
There we go, there we go. So there's actually a spot there where the pavers are damaged, and so this will actually cover up that, so we don't need to spend money to fix it. So I would use the phrase, two birds, one stone, but since we're a bird town now, I think we're against that, so I won't use that phrase. Just a couple of quick highlights of why this location was selected. This trashcan will be visible from the tot lot, so that hopefully, people will walk their trash over rather than just throwing it on the ground, which it's shocking how many people just throw their trash on the ground in the tot lot. Or, I mean, I threw away Wawa cups this week when I was there with Natalie that were just set on the pillars of the fence, and the trashcan wasn't even full, but there was a trashcan three feet away. Chief Kelly, we're going to arrest these people right before you leave?
We're going to try and find them.
Okay, perfect.
Find the perps.
So the the other thought process was, we have no trashcans on Main Street right at Afton. We have one down at Main and College. But by having it there, it will be visible from Main Street. When a lot of people sit at the tables and chairs under the mural, they will often leave their trash sitting there. And so another reason why this location was picked, we didn't really want it right on Main Street, where you're driving down a historic Main Street, and here's a trashcan. And we didn't really want it to block the Yardley mural. And so that's why the location was was picked, and Parks and Rec was good with that. I almost thought it wasn't going to pass for a minute, because there was a lot of scrutiny on the location. But yeah, so this will not cost the borough anything. I do want to commend Manager Johnson for buying the extra trashcan enclosures a few years ago, because when we priced these out last fall, we found out they've gone up from 500 to about $1,100. So there's, that's what, over 100% inflation, 120% inflation on trashcan receptacles? It's a little ridiculous. So yeah, if anybody has any questions, happy to to answer them.
We need more trashcans. Can we get them a bargain from Lower Makefield, because they took them all out of all their places?
You can ask. They don't have, they don't have the nice con closures like we do.
They took their trashcans out?
Yeah.
Really?
At like, all tennis courts and all that, they have a sign there saying.
And now they do carry-in, carry-out?
Carry-out, and they start removing them. So I wonder what they do, but if they're not the right guy.
That's true, yeah.
So I think one of the, I mean, that's a great thought. So that was actually one of the things we discussed extensively. I know one of the members of Parks and Rec even said, well, why can't people walk back into a business where they got the trash to throw it away? And my comment on that was, that would be wonderful if adults were adults, but they're not, so.
I think there's a difference. I learned recently about the carry-in, carry-out and how, there's a difference in a kind of a natural area where you can be expected to bring your picnic stuff, you take it out. It's different than when you consume products in like a burrito place or a cafe. They give you paper stuff out. Now you need a place to put that, and it's, it's a good problem that people have trash to have to get rid of. It means they bought something and they supported our downtown businesses, which is what we want.
And I think, too, when people are on foot, too, you know, they're walking, they're not, it's not like you're driving to the tennis courts to play tennis and then you're driving home.
Yes, I just want to give you some, just a couple of thoughts. Are we doing that? There's a discussion, right?
Yeah, yeah, I love it.
Because I think, thank you for what you're doing and for the pictures, and thank you for, you know, I mean, it's both sad and wonderful. It's sad that you have to go through a year and a half of work in small-town government to put it in a trashcan.
Literally, just had somebody message me on Facebook and said, oh, my gosh, you guys are still talking about this?
Yeah, yeah. And it's like, what? And also, you know, some with your skill set, spending time in it. And it's wonderful, because you chose to, you saw a need, and you chose to make it happen and get everyone aligned and really go into monitoring the use of where people are throwing things out and where they need it. And I can tell you that people have definitely, over the years, especially more recently, told me, why isn't there a trashcan here? Why isn't one there? It's not, it's not the only location that people have mentioned, but I just, I think it's great that you put your time into doing that for us, and I appreciate that you are a caring person on council who's willing to put the time into doing that.
Yeah, becoming a dad has made me very boring, so thank you, Councilman Finer.
All right, so I, any other comments, questions on this? We can have a motion. We're not approving any expenditures. It doesn't sound like, just we're approving the location on Buttonwood Drive as pictured in the council packet. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? Motion was made by councilperson Finer, seconded by councilperson Carlson. Any questions or comments from the public? Okay, hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Stump and Parks and Rec.
Thank you.
Anything else from community outreach?
No, the one thing I wanted to do that I decided to wait till after this to widen the mood a little bit was, after we hire a police officer here, we always move the table aside and bring them up and take a photo with them and move the flags in, and I wanted to do that with our council and Chief Kelly at our last council meeting with him. So can we do that now?
Can we do it at the end?
Do you want to do it at the end instead? Okay, as long as, as long as everybody doesn't leave. I know we're typically pretty quick to get out of here.
On our notice. Sorry to notice for taking a picture. As long as that's okay with Chief Kelly.
Figuring out his exit plan.
He's closest to the door.
Right, in 10 years, right.
All right, Community and Economic Development, Councilperson Applebaum, please.
Hello, hello.
Hello.
Hello. All right. Thank you for having me talk about, oh geez, I gotta learn how to use this thing. The Community and Economic Development Committee of Yardley Borough. Let me see if I can, I just wanted to make it a little bit bigger so people could see what I wrote. I just bullet, for people that aren't familiar with what the Community and Economic Development Committee does, I wanted, I bullet pointed the salient points. Reviews land development and subdivision applications and requests for zoning change. Reports the council on impending and current litigation pertaining to planning, zoning and building issues. Reviews existing zoning and land development ordinances and makes recommendations to council regarding suggested changes. And finally amends and/or facilitates the amendment of existing ordinances and/or facilitates the creation of new ordinances. I'll talk a little bit about those things and also ask my colleagues who are involved with community and economic development to assist me. But I will say that I've tried to take it beyond these four bullet points, and I'll explain that. Firstly, I am the liaison to Harb or Historical Architectural Review Board. And I'm a, just as a point of information, just liaison for Environmental Advisory Board. Don Carlson serves as the council liaison for the zoning hearing board. He is also Chair of Government, General Government Committee and Liaison for Sewer Authority. Ori Finer serves as council liaison to the Planning Commission, another important component of this. And of course, he's VP of Council and the Chair of Public Works. I again will say that I wanted to include some of these other responsibilities because sometimes they seem to dovetail into other things and overlap, so it's worth noting that. What I'll do now is I'll just talk, whoops, I am so sorry. What we're working on, and I'm going to ask those people who are involved as the leads to just kind of talk a little bit about them. So obviously, we've been talking about a new ordinance for short-term lodging. I'll pass it over to Don just for a very brief, high-level comment.
We've been working on this for over a year. Gotten lots of inputs from people on how they feel about it. And we've, I think we're getting close to a consensus on a, on a lodging ordinance that makes sense in the commercial district only. And hopefully we'll bring that to conclusion here in the next month.
Okay, thank you. And then I'm not sure I got this correct, but I called it a smoke shop ordinance. It may include vape as well. I'd like to ask Ori Finer, who took the lead on that, to talk a little bit about it.
Yeah, this came up when a smoke shop was looking into opening in town. And I think it got us alarmed thinking about how some towns get overrun by smoke shops. You don't have to look very far. Go south a little bit from Yardley, you can see what happens when there's a proliferation of one type of business. And that type of business tends to prey on young people and addictive behaviors that, hey, you know, it's America, do what you want. But that kind of business does well in small areas because people keep coming back for more. And so it has, runs the risk of displacing businesses that actually serve our family-friendly community. So we started looking into doing that and lo and behold, a smoke shop did open up. Fortunately, it already is gone. But it rose the issue that we need a way to deal with it. And we recently met with community development, sees, uh, community.
And economic.
And economic development. When I went to college, there was a department with a similar name with the letters reversed, so I always trip up on that. Anyway, and we went over detailed measurements on the map. And we're zeroing in on what the correct number of feet are. We already have ordinances collected from other towns that look pretty good. It's really just a matter with this of getting, striking a balance that will be acceptable in case it's challenged. To not be something that limits the ability for business to open, rather constrains it to a limited amount to a way that, you know, basically is, is allowable. So it's underway and I think it'll be good for the town. Anything else on that? You want me to add anything specific about that?
Okay. Unless the residents.
Do you want to have any questions about that?
No, because we'll present something at some point. So I think it's just satisfactory to give a high-level description of what we're doing. That's really the point of what I wanted to do. I didn't have anything to say. So I threw in towns against graffiti or tag. That is an ordinance that passed previously, but I only bring it up because it in many ways contributes to positive economic impact due to keeping our, you know, quaint town looking, you know, the character that we've achieved through, or, you know, committees like Harb to maintain that charm. And so if you don't do something against graffiti, you may lose that character. And right now, I'm in the process of refin, I don't know if refinancing is the right word, but re-funding tag. We're looking for donors, we're donor for $1,500. I promised when I brought it to council that I would do my very best to find a sponsor or someone to donate the money so that it wouldn't cost the taxpayer anything. And I'm sticking to that. And I would, what I would suggest or maybe pose is that I am not just looking to fund for this year, but to raise as much as I can so that we have money for the following years. So the, the task isn't as difficult. So with that said.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, sure.
What is your method of monetary collection? Is it something that we could ping out to our network on social media or email? Like, do you have a
Yes.
offer that it's going to, or how is that working? I need to be able to ask people where to donate to, right?
Correct. I will, I will get, we'll take this offline because I, the money will go directly to the borough. So we'll have to speak to Borough Manager Johnson and set something up so that, you know, if people do want to donate, they can directly to the borough because I don't want to touch it. But I do want a, you know, centrally managed, essential collection for this so that, you know, there's just one place and there's no mistake about it. The important thing about this is we have benefited tremendously from this ordinance. If you walk around town, it's difficult to notice graffiti. But once you start looking for it, you find it. And over the last year, through the consortium, which is, I believe, now nine municipalities that belong, Anthony, who is the person whose company, his company removes the graffiti, removed over 40 instances of graffiti. Some were small, some were large. But the cumulative effect of removing it is that we have a cleaner and prettier town. So there's no doubt that it's had a beneficial effect. And last year during, I believe it was summer or late spring, someone graffiti the tot lot with large pieces of chalk. And so I asked Anthony to go over and power wash the walls. And I said, and if you can do anything about cleaning up the equipment, I'd appreciate it. And I know we're raising funds to replace it, but at least in the interim, he was able to remove all this, you know, dark grime and years of use to make it look eh, better. So I really want to thank the tag team. They really deserve our thanks. Moving on then, is there any questions about tag?
Well, another one that would happen was in the gazebo in Buttonwood Park. There was one that devolved, very quickly devolved into like a very heated, negative discussion through chalk that started to be using slurs and all that. And I remember you, you got, you, same thing, you let them know.
That's right.
It was gone immediately.
Mm-hmm, oh, yes.
And I think we chuck all like chalk as graffiti, but
Yes.
if anybody has any kids who use chalk, if you chalk a wall that can't get direct rain on it or if you chalk under a covering, it will literally be there for years. It never goes away unless you power wash it off.
I guess we can chalk that up to those kids.
So we're abusing the ordinance. It is truly graffiti if it's placed correctly.
Well, I guess my ask is that if we don't reach you tonight, but if we do, that you consider a donation. And we're also obviously going to speak to the people that were affected. A lot of businesses and, you know, property owners along the commercial district were affected and now do not have to worry about the remediation of it. And let's be honest, the $1,500 that we pay is a small sum compared to the total amount that someone privately would have to pay a company to come out and remove certain types of graffiti. So it's a bargain. So thank you.
I have a question, Dave.
Sure.
Does he keep track of how many times he does it in each, and each, Brown can give us some stats because that would be interesting. Because I know we, we started it, was, last year was the first official year, right?
Correct.
And there was a lot to get to because stuff had been around for a while. Have there been repeat offenders? Has it come back? Have we had places that have, have had repeats? Interesting to know if it was kind of one and done.
It's a really good question, Don, and I don't have the answer in front of me, but I do have, he sends me before and after pictures.
Of each time he does one?
Yes, and I do know the location. So that's a great question. I can see if I can create some data from that.
I would also add, if I remember correctly, because I remember being kind of astonished by this, that the tag does not require the $1,500. They, they ask for it, but I believe you remain a member if you cannot pay it in full. Obviously, we should try to.
Wait a minute, don't ruin my fundraising efforts.
No, but I think that makes it, I think it makes it even more like they're in it for the right reason. It's not like they're like just going town to town collecting $1,500.
Well, that's actually only partially true. You see, it's $1,500 for a borough. It's $5,000 for a township. So we're on the less expensive end of it. And I appreciate all the money that our fellow townships are putting into it. And as I said, it's nine municipalities. You can pretty much figure out by just listing the, you know, municipalities in lower Bucks counties which ones they are. I don't remember, I can't recite them all. So yeah, I'm very happy and don't, don't say anything we're about.
Well, just one, one more thing I want to say about that, which is so, it's so important that we're doing it. Having grown up in New York City in the 70s and 80s and ridden the subways where you couldn't even see the paint, you know? I mean, today you see it glorified as artwork. Those were the nice ones, but there were a lot that were not very nice.
Right.
And also, having been to places where kind of it starts and then it's just, it's like a virus. And because the graffiti, I mean, I learned through your process of doing this that a lot of it is symbols for other people. There's like codes in there. It's not as simple as just graffiti. But the general message is lawlessness is okay here, you know? That's what it, when people see that, they see.
And that's why I encourage us to get this.
Yeah, and so it's not just that it proliferates. It sends a message. And also not having it or having it go away sends the opposite message that we're on top of our game. It's so incredibly important, even though it's not that visible.
So leave your chalk at the door before you get, come into town. All right. Thank you. If there's nothing else, I'll continue. Just real quickly. Yeah, thank you. So the last two bullet items are reviewing existing ordinances. It's, it's funny that, I was thinking a little bit about this, but Don brought it up this afternoon when we were talking. And that's something we want to be more active in our duties to kind of review some of the, you know, ordinances that we have on the books to make sure that they are, you know, not just up to date, they're not archaic, they're not social anachronisms. Like when I was doing the graffiti ordinance, there was, I was looking at other burrows and they were saying, you know, stuff about newspaper boxes and telephone booths. And I'm like, no, that can't go in our ordinance because that's really not appropriate. But Don, did you want to make a, a comment on that?
Well, I just think, you know, we know that, you know, the ordinance book is what, six and a half inches thick? There's a lot to it. And what ones do you go after? In the last few years, we've gone after them as a result of something triggering it. Whether it was outdoor dining, issues post-COVID, short-term rentals, the ones you see up here on the board. I think it would be good if we tried to be proactive and think about what are the ones that are worth going after. And from my perspective, since this is a working meeting, I think just looking at the zoning and permitted, permitted uses and what are the different things that are called out in the ordinance? Whether it's, well, all the different things that are called out there, are they still relevant? Or do we need something, are there new things that are, that could be permitted uses that we need to look, look after?
Well, things you said this afternoon, if I remember correctly, you said something to the effect of, you know, things change, modern, or modernized, new technology, et cetera. And we need to make sure that we are in, aligned with some of these things as they, as time goes on.
Right. So we, so like, you know, obviously phone booths don't, aren't relevant anymore. But EV charging stations might be, you know, those probably aren't in our ordinances anywhere. I haven't looked. Maybe they are. I kind of doubt it. And they, you know, where do they fall in there? Those, those kinds of things, so.
Sure. And then just to follow that was discussion regarding the creation of new ordinances. Just like the short-term lodging ordinance, smoke shop ordinance, and then in the past towns against graffiti, or the graffiti ordinance. It's important to keep our eyes open to, again, following the same logic as revising ordinances to look at if there's potential ordinances that may benefit the community. And just, unless there's a question, want to add that? No? Just to finish out, I just, as I said earlier, I feel that these are all things that fall under this committee. But on my own, I've given myself several other tasks to look more closely at the economic impact of the town as far as, you know, it being a destination, how well the businesses are doing. You know, what does, what is the effect of making us a bird town or Tree City USA, et cetera, et cetera? Oh, and one other one I'm working on, not as actively as I can with all this other stuff going on, is to look at the makeup of our business owners. One thing I've said a lot over the last couple of years is that more new businesses and business, and existing businesses have been women-owned and are women-owned or co-women-owned. And the, it amazes me that my informal survey, though I'm trying to get like more concrete, you know, data, is that the percentage of women-owned businesses is extremely high in this town. And I think that's something we should be proud of because in, in a day and age where maybe people don't appreciate small businesses and maybe they don't appreciate the fact that these are people who are family people and, and, you know, and of course, I encourage women to do this. I find that important and I think it builds upon our economic impact. Because people are coming because of our, not just because we're a beautiful, quaint little town of Victorian homes. And what was it that you said, Don, like?
Great usage of tourist homes.
Yeah, okay, be quiet. Yeah, but, but the point is, is that there's a lot more to consider when we consider the economic impact and where it's coming from and understand it so that we can do more to build upon that economic impact. Is there any other comments or questions? And I'll finish. Is there any other comments or questions? And I'll finish.
I think it's super important that you see it that way. And I actually think the reason that it's not written into that, this committee is because it really didn't exist on any significant level enough that it was seen as necessary. But then we went through different ups and downs economically. When I moved here in 2011, I mean, it was kind of dead downtown. You didn't really see people walking around that much. And there's just, there's a lot more life in town. And it's nice to live in a town where you can walk into town. And there are other people there that you can see and there's, there are businesses that are serving them, independent businesses. It's incredibly important that we, as a council, work with the business community. To, their success and our success is synonymous. We're not at odds with each other, you know? And I think a lot of the, I think the vast majority of the residences agree with that. That's why they chose to live here. You know, you could live in, out somewhere.
To have a higher quality of life in town means a viable business community, one that's making money. And how do they do that? With the help of the barrow and others who are investing in the barrow, including new businesses. Otherwise, we are not, you know, bigger than the, some of those, you know, variables. We just will fall apart. And I will mention that during the, I almost called it epidemic, I'm sorry, pandemic, my observation was that we were net plus on businesses when many towns were suffering. Something about Yardley. People came and decide, even during a pandemic, that they were going to invest here. So it's our obligation to make sure that they can be successful. And finally, just to piggyback on what you said, Ori, I would be remiss not to say, because I've talked about how these things dovetail and overlap between committees. Public Works, which I work on with you, is also benefiting the businesses because we have something called Walkable Yardley, you know, I mean, in an informal way. We are creating, extending our sidewalks, which means that people, not only in our town, can get downtown without a vehicle or at least they could take a bicycle or walk. But now, if we finish these plans as expected, other people from other communities will be able to get into town as easier. And that improves all these items that we've been speaking about. We want this to be a great destination for people, but they have to be able to get here. And another way to do that is to improve walkability. Did you have a comment on that, Ori?
Well, it all, it all works together because the walkability, especially like now with North Main, Dolington, and eventually Afton, connects thousands of residents to be able to safely walk into the borough and support our businesses. Our businesses are competing with Amazon, online businesses and malls. For them to be successful, the unique flavor of Yardley has to be the draw, right? And part of that is being able to walk to it, to be able to enjoy, you know, an interesting town and other things, natural things around. In 2013, when I first started going door to door running for council, I, one of the first doors I knocked on, I distinctly remember because the woman said to me, I work from home, you know, everything's good in Yardley, but I have an 18-year-old. And could you do something to up the hipster quotient in this town? Because my 18-year-old's bored, you know, nothing to do. And, you know, it was a funny comment, but actually now I have an 18-year-old. And the other day I was walking in town and I saw there were, there were teenagers, you know, in Maine and Afton are walking around. There were teenagers sitting in the kind of like seating area by the shopping center. There were teenagers on the porch of the bookstore, which welcomes them to sit there. And I, I know some people don't like teenagers, but hey, you know, we are all teenagers. So I like teenagers because I, you know, to me, I'm honored that they're choosing to spend time in our town and use our town and be part of our town. And they live here, you know, so it's not like a destination, like they're tourists coming from two hours away. They actually have something that they can walk to and interesting enough to be at. To me, that's like what this is about.
I'll just finish up and hand this back to President. But when people ask me where I'm going on vacation, I go Yardley. I don't leave. So there you go.
So I did, Councilperson Applebaum, if I could use this as kind of an example, we're, we're about to end Q1 already. And I think if every committee would just take inventory of what's on your plate and specifically highlight anything that's been hanging out, like if you've been trying to put a trashcan in for a year and a half, like, take a look at that. Why is this taking this long? What can we do to move it along? I think it's, it's important that as committees, we do take inventory of everything that's on our plate. And also goals for the year, you know, we still have three quarters left. Regardless of our plans to be on this council in the future. So let's sprint to the finish and, you know, get things done. All right.
Sprint to the finish, but the steady pace wins the race.
A and B. All right, I would entertain a motion to adjourn unless there are last-minute additions for agenda.
U moved.
Is there a second? All right, meeting adjourned at 9:04. Thank you, everyone.